Good evening, welcome everyone to the September 2nd Samamish Planning to Commission Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and start out with roll call. If you would just unmute yourself, raise your hand, say here for the recording. So I'm Mark Baughman here. Mike Bresko. Josh Amato.
Here.
Karen Malcolm. Ritu Jindupir.
Yeah.
And I don't see, oh, I'm sorry, TC Abi.
Hello.
TC and then Karthik Setharaman. I don't see Karthik. Okay. Amber, would you read the meeting accessibility statement?
Yes, one moment. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the Planning Commission meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment can be submitted. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes for non-agenda comment, five minutes if representing an organization, and seven minutes for agenda public comment. Once you have dialed into the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to indicate you would like to provide public comment. Your mic will remain muted until you are called on during the public comment period. To provide public comment, you may join via the Zoom webinar link, To give public comment via mobile or landline, dial the following number, Webinar ID number is 91076897869. You may raise a virtual hand by dialing star nine. And when I unmute you for public comment, you can state your name and where you are a resident of. Thank you.
And maybe I'll just mention that since we've transitioned over to using Zoom here, that the URL for the Zoom that Amber read is in the packet. So if someone's looking for it, didn't catch the number or something, it's in the packet that's posted to the city's website for the meeting. So you can take a look there. Next is approval of the agenda for this evening. Anyone have any comments or requested corrections to the agenda? Nope, so we'll call the agenda approved by common consent. Next one is approval of the minutes from our July 15th meeting. That was quite a while ago, but does anyone have any corrections from those minutes? Okay, seeing no comments. We'll call the minutes from the July 15th meeting approved by common consent. Next is public agenda for, uh, public, sorry, public comment for non-agenda items. So we'll try it here doing public comment for things other than the school impact fees that we're going to talk about this evening that's on the agenda. So if you have comments on something else, now would be the time. And I guess I'm not sure, Amber, how this will work, but is there anyone for public com- non-agenda public comment?
I have three attendees and I will make them a panelist and ask if they would like to share one moment.
Hi, this is Mary Victor and I am a citizen of the city of Samamish. For non-agenda comment, I just wanted to say briefly that when the meeting starts, you're asked if there's any comments on the minutes and then you accept them before the public can comment. I do have one comment on public comment. On July 5th, on the July meeting, I had actually given public comment and trying to be just a little bit more descriptive in the minutes. The example this thing is, is on page five out of 37 in the packet. There are three motions. The first one is fine. The second one is good because it lists the section and then it says for reasonable use exception language. And then on the third motion, which Mike Bresko moved, it just gives 21 dot 30 dot 400, but doesn't say what it is. I don't have all the codes memorized and that one would actually be new under the Unified Development Code, which is being considered. So I looked that up because I know how to do that and it's the planned unit development. So if those words could get put in, it would be great. Plus, when the Unified Development Code and Phase Two Development Regulations are done, a lot of the code's going to be renumbered. So I think it's really important to put the word or the topic of what's being done in. So if people can't find the numbers, the numbers have changed. But they can, like if you search for reasonable use exception, you can find that on the city website and also in the code. So thanks for the work that you're doing and the chance for people to be on Zoom. I couldn't get the Zoom to work, so I called in today by phone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment and I will move on to our next public comment. Caller, you are unmuted.
Hello, Planning Commission, Paul Stickney here. I don't have a comment for the non-agenda portion, just testing it out.
Thank you. And we do have one more caller. Caller, you are unmuted. Okay, I don't believe there's a comment from that caller. And so back to Chair Baughman.
Thanks, Amber. Got to get used to the new location of my mute button. Okay, so for this evening, we have a new business item. We're going to try to accomplish a few things here. We're going to do the presentation of this topic, discussion about the School Impact Fee Code amendments. And then the way this should go, just as a reminder for everybody, we'll have the presentation and then we'll have the opportunity to ask questions about what's been presented. Then we will open the public hearing, take public comments on the topic, close the public hearing. I'll ask for any further questions as a result of the public comments. Then we should have a motion and a second and discussion. So, you know, the questions should be first and then the discussion should be second, assuming that we want to make a motion on the recommendation. And we can have a discussion and eventually lead to a vote of a recommendation to the City Council potentially. So that should be the order of things and remind me if I get off track with any of that. I always appreciate that. So I think we should be starting with the presentation. Is that you, Lindsay?
It is, thank you Chair Baughman. If you can bear with me for just a moment, I'm going to pull up the presentation.
I can?
Okay, great, thank you so much. All right. Again, my name is Lindsay Ogle. I am a project manager in the Long Range Planning Division for Community Development Services and I'm here this evening to give a presentation on School Impact Fees Code Update to Chapter 21A 105 of Samamish Municipal Code at the direction of City Council. As Chair Baughman explained this evening, the agenda will go in this order. We're proposing the agenda go in this order. Staff will give our presentation. We'll address any questions that the commission may have at that point in the process. Then the commission would open the public hearing, take public comment and then at their discretion and close the public comment portion and then go through their deliberations and any recommendation you may choose to make to City Council. So the main question to be asked this evening is, should the Planning Commission recommend to City Council that school impact fee developer contribution be updated to 75% from 50%? By way of background and process, the Growth Management Act, sorry, needed to move the, my screen a little bit. The Growth Management Act, or commonly known as GMA, requires communities to plan for capital facilities. This has two main points. It's one to support new development and then also to maintain established standards at adequate levels of service. Impact fees may be used only to pay for new facilities needed as a result of new development and this is pursuant to RCW 8202050. The city collects school impact fees on behalf of school districts as set annually by the school districts' capital facilities plans. The city goes through a process each year after the school districts have gone through their process and adopts their capital facilities plans and then the set impact fees via ordinances. This is typically done in the fourth quarter of each year. Usually in November is when this goes to City Council for adoption. The capital facilities plans go through their own process with the school districts and the school boards, with public outreach, SEPA review, and adoption of their capital facilities plans before it's even forwarded on to the municipalities, which Samamish is one of them. And the forwarding on of the approved capital facilities plans from the school districts is typically in the third quarter. So around July, August, that timeframe. To give some existing background information, impact fees, like I stated, are calculated on a district-by-district basis using the district's capital facilities plans. Each district has two separate impact, school impact fees. One is specific for single-family units and one is for multifamily units. It's not divided any further than that for multifamily units. It's simply one fee if it's a multifamily unit and a different one if it's a single-family unit. Currently, we're using a discount factor of 50% for the unfunded amount for the developer contribution versus the overall taxpayer-city contribution, if you will. This was, this formula that's used in the discount factor dates back to 1991 when King County adopted an impact fee ordinance. And Samamish adopted this structure in 1999 when we became a city and incorporated. The existing formula and discount factor is used widely across the state. I would also note that all of the different municipalities located within the three school districts that Samamish is encompassed by all use the same, currently all use the same formula and discount factor. Factors for impact fee calculation include the number and cost of growth-related facility projects, student generation rates, which is described as the number of students that come from either a single-family or a multifamily development that have been built in the last five years. This is data that the school districts maintain. Credits for state school construction funds towards planned projects and then credits for taxes based on a thousand of AB and average assessed valuation of those housing units. So as mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, school impact fees are found in Samamish Municipal Code in Chapter 21A dot 105. The explanation of the five items in the fee calculations is found in subsection 040. The formula itself is found in subsection 100 of 21A 105. And the portion that we're potentially changing or proposing to change through these draft regulations is highlighted in that red box. Currently, it's shown that the developer fee obligation is the unfunded need divided by two. Another way would be times 50% or .5. So council gave direction to staff to work on this item dating back a few years now. Staff picked this up in 2020, had numerous conversations with the school districts and then in March of 2021, had a meeting with City Council and school districts' representation where we were given, city staff that is, was given direction by City Council at a four-three vote to move forward with working on amending this code section to have a 75% multiplier for the developer fee contribution. And then also to go ahead and clean up a few of this, a few minor Scrivener errors located in this code section. And I will point these out once I pull up the code language here in just a moment, but that's a reference to an interim comprehensive plan, which our comprehensive plan is no longer interim. We do have a fully adopted comprehensive plan. So we're requesting to strike the word interim. And then also there was an incorrect code section citation on page two, line six, which again, I'll show in just a moment. So proposed this evening is basically to change the discount factor from 50% to 75%. So that being the developer contribution of the impact fee assessed, both for single-family and multifamily fee collections for each of the three school districts. And I don't think that I stated this yet for the record, but the three school districts that we have within the city of Samamish is Izuaq School District, the Lake Washington School District, and the Snoqualmie Valley School District. Bear with me just a moment, I'm going to stop sharing my screen so that I can pull up the draft code document. Okay. Hopefully everyone can see this. I'm going to go ahead and scroll and I want to keep this large so everyone can read it. But if you prefer that I make it a little bit smaller so you can see a full page, please let me know that as well. So the first item, all items that we're proposing to change again are showing track changes. So in red and with either a strike through or an underline. So here on page one at line 18, you'll see we're requesting that interim be struck from the code, that it's just comprehensive plan based on the 75% multiplier that we're proposing proportionate. We felt needed to come out of this line. So we're requesting to strike the word proportionate in line 21 of page one of the draft code changes. And then moving on to page two, it talks about impact fees will be assessed on every new, it originally said dwelling unit in the district, but for clarity, because impact fees are collected either for new single-family or new multifamily residential unit, we felt that it was important to propose language so that that was clear. So we're requesting to strike dwelling and put in single-family and multifamily residential unit in its place. Line six here is where it talks about data from the district called for by the formula in SMC. Again, just citing the incorrect code section subsection within 21A 105. So we've corrected that to take you actually to the formula, which is found in subsection 100. Another interim being struck with comprehensive plan. Then the remainder of the changes have to do with that 75% number. And that is down here on page. We're getting there, don't want to make anyone dizzy. Here we go, 21A 105 100. That starts on page nine of the PDF document, draft code. But it's actually, I believe, page 10 where there's yes correction. So line six on page 10, the developer fee obligation, we've added local impact in parentheses for clarity and then corrected the formula to instead of being a division of two or a multiplication of 50% to be that 75% number. And then this calculation is also shown in a table format. So we've made the same correction to that. On page 12 of that table format at line 10, striking divided by two and adding multiplied by 75%, which would give you the developer fee. I'm going to go back to the PowerPoint here to finish the presentation. All right. So for clarity around this conversation, we wanted to provide a comparison. So we have two tables here for school impact fee comparison. And the top one is for single-family units. The bottom table is for multifamily units. We've added the three school districts, Izuaq, Lake Washington, and Snoqualmie Valley. And then that second column that says 2021, single-family per unit 50% and 2021, multifamily per unit 50% that are surrounded by red boxes. Those are the current adopted fees that the city of Samamish adopted by ordinance at the end of 2020 for the 2021 year. They're part of our fee schedule. These were set through the capital facilities plans provided by the school districts. So if we were to change it based on the current fees this year, which again, they change annually based on data that the school districts calculate and have in their capital facilities plans, but so that we can use real day numbers. If we were to change it to the 75% developer contribution, the per-unit, single-family rate for the Izuaq School District would be $27,319.50. The Lake Washington would be $22,605. And the Snoqualmie Valley would be $15,825. Doing the same math for the multifamily, the Izuaq multifamily rate would go from $12,043 to $18,064.50. Lake Washington would go from $27,01 to $4,051.50. And the Snoqualmie Valley would go from $47,306.50 to $7,095.98. Then we also felt it was prudent to show you the 100%. So no multiplication factor included of the fees as well, which is in that far right column. So staff's recommendation for this evening is that Planning Commission move to recommend to City Council the proposed amendments to Chapter 21A 105 of the Samamish Municipal Code, school impact fees as presented by staff and as described in Exhibit 1 of your agenda packet. And I will pause at this point and ask if you have any questions.
Okay. Thanks, Lindsay. Who has questions for, about this topic? Go ahead, TC.
I have kind of a series of questions. Some of these are probably pretty rudimentary and I apologize for kind of the remedial mathematics on this. With regards to the discount, where does the non-discounted amount come from? Or the non-developer paid fee?
So all of those numbers come from the capital facilities plans that the districts provide to the city. Currently, the districts actually calculate the numbers themselves and provide that fee in their capital facilities plans for the cities to adopt. So that's where that information comes from.
Okay, let me, let me try asking the question a little bit different. Who contributes the non-developer portion?
David, you want to try that one?
Yeah, so that, great, great question. So what, what the school districts do as part of their capital facilities plans is they identify the total cost of providing school facilities, brick and mortar, to students. And they identify, you know, with the upcoming projection in enrollment. And they also look at the number of students that have been generated from projects that have been brought online within their district. And if you read through these capital facilities plans, they're, they're really forecasting about what their needs will be going forward for district growth and also for, well, let's call it useful lifecycle replacement of school facilities. So they're, they're looking at renovating buildings, building new buildings, expanding buildings. And it's not all necessarily related to the, the, the cost of, of growth, right? Of adding new students into the, into the system. So what they then do is try to parse out the, the, the portion of the cost that is related to the, to growth. And there's natural growth and then there's development growth. So natural growth can occur without even any development occurring in a community. You, you could see new students brought online. You could see, you know, the birth rates in different parts of the, parts of the state are different. And they, they have demographers that help them with all this. So at, at the end of, of this big process they go through, each, each district does it a little bit differently. They are required to provide these, these factors to the, the cities in order to generate the impact fees. And then the cities are then partnering with them through inter-local agreement to collect impact fees on behalf of the school districts. So, so what happens is they, they provide us with the numbers. The numbers are then used in the formula to generate what the impact fee is. And then at the bottom of the impact fee calculation, there is a, a local share that is basically the, the burden of the school district to provide. And then the, the, the balance is the developer's share. The local share comes from the taxpayers. So if, if you've taken a look at King County Parcel Viewer and you were to go into any property in Samamish, any residential property in Samamish, you can look at what I call the pizza pie, which shows where all the tax, property tax dollars go. And you'll see that each different agency has a share. School districts have, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, and I, don't quote me on this, I think the biggest share of the pizza pie. So that is, is where funds for the local, local share come from. The balance is borne by the developer and that, that's paid by the developer in, in the form of impact fees. So really, it's, it's that balance and it's, it's the, a couple of other things that are important to point out here is that even if Samamish had a, a high rate of growth compared to, say, Redmond, it's not, I'm not saying that's happening, but to say by, for example, to contrast this, but say Samamish had a very fast rate of development and Redmond had a very slow rate of development. And we were collecting a, a high, high amount of impact fee in Samamish, that doesn't mean that that impact fee is going to be spent in Samamish. That money goes to the district and the district uses it as it sees fit in order to fund their facilities. So that money doesn't necessarily stay in Samamish. So if you were to raise or lower impact fees, it doesn't mean there will be less or more money available for those schools in Samamish. It means there will be less or more money available for the school district across its geographical boundaries for it to see fit as to how to spend it in order to best provide school facilities for the, the students in the district. So I want to be really clear on that. Just because we raise or lower the fees in Samamish does not mean that the money will remain in Samamish or if, or that there may be less money available in Samamish if it was to be lowered. Just want to clarify that as well.
Okay, so that brings up an interesting point, David, which is, is the, or are the fees collected as part of this, regardless of whether it comes from taxpayers or developers, divided equally amongst the three school districts? Or are the fees allocated based on the location of the plat- or parcel and the school district that serves it?
It's based on the geographic location and the school district that serves it. So for example, if your project was located within the jurisdictional boundaries of, of the Izuaq School District, the impact fees that would be collected would be calculated based on the Izuaq School District impact fee rates, because they're all different, if you recall the slide that Lindsay had up. And then that would be paid to the Izuaq School District.
So if I go back and I boil down your previous explanation about. Where the non-developer portion of the fees come from. Is it? Accurate to say? That existing residents within a district jurisdiction. Are encumbered by the balance of the fee. Outside of the discount factor? So if we're taking. A fee of whatever dividing it by two. Half goes to the developer, half goes to the taxpayers. Who already exist within that district? Within the city of Sammamish?
So, so there, there's a cost to provide facilities to students. Then that, that cost is divided in half. Currently, half of that is paid by the, the taxpayers within the district. Half of that is paid by development. That's coming in the door. Now, now it's not necessarily half of the full cost. Because you can't. You can't force a rate of development. Development comes in waves. And it comes in, in response to market factors. Whereas the schools are, are needing a steady flow of funds. So if there's less development. Then there's additional funding that's going to be coming from the taxpayers, if that makes sense. Do you see where I'm going with this? But if there's more development, then there might be less of a burden on taxpayers. For those years where development has, has spiked.
So just to clarify, David, when you say taxpayers, you mean and, and the, the share that's paid by the taxpayers. That is levies or bonds that are issued by the school districts, correct?
That, that's my understanding. Now, I'm not an expert on.
No.
School funding.
So I, I, can I just offer a, a question that might help with this, David? So. If I understand correctly, I think. We are talking about changing the fee that's assessed against new development. But tax, the taxpayers' property taxes. Within the city of Sammamish, within any of these districts. Will not change. Based on what we do. That's up to the school district to manage their budget. To do their capital projects with whatever dollars they have. It will not change the taxpayer. Now, that's not to say King County might change our tax rates. They do that every year. But separate from this, nobody's taxes change as a result of the action that we take. Property taxes are going to be what they're going to be. They don't go down, they don't go up based on this. All we're doing is changing the fee that developers will be assessed. When they build new units. And they contribute that into the pot of money for the district where the units are being built. And I say that because it's important, I think, to point out that. You could, you could have a year in theory where there's absolutely no development that occurs whatsoever. But a school district may still need to be building a new school. And they have to manage their budget, capital budget to fund that. So it's two separate topics, right? Nobody's going to pay more property tax if we change this or don't change it. This is just a question of fee assessed against the developers. Now you tell me if any of that is right or wrong?
I, I, I agree with that, with that summary.
But I wonder if TC's original question was, since we keep saying fifty percent discounted, TC, what are you thinking? You know, you have that, you know, the Lindsay, the, the amount that you showed where it's hundred percent. And, and maybe Commissioner Labby's question was, okay, fifty percent is what developers pay. What happens to the other fifty percent? Who, who puts that up? Was that a question?
Yeah, I, I think it's kind of a more far reaching question and it, and it blends both what Chair Baughan and. What, what you were saying, Chair Endepur was. Fundamentally, that, that portion has to be made up. And year over year, it might not. Directly impact individual homeowners or individual property taxpayers. But it fundamentally goes into the calculation that each of the school districts are doing. As they forecast out multiple years. So if we, if we sit and we look at it and say. I mean. We could potentially give the developers a hundred percent credit in order to encourage more development within the city of Sammamish. And now. The entirety of that burden will fall on the, the existing property taxpayers. And it will take some time for that to catch up. In that there will have to be a bond or a levy or a property tax increase. Whereas if it were to go the other direction where developers pay one hundred percent. Then over the course of time, we should expect. That. That would then. Benefit individual ratepayers. Right? Where, and really where I'm trying to get to is. Why, why is the formula derived such that existing residents are having to fund? And pay for a portion of. Effectively a bill or a fee. To benefit a for-profit entity, which would be a builder or a developer. Right? So a builder or developer wants to come into the city of Sammamish and build. However many units, they factor into their cost of construction. And whatever their profit is going to be, having to pay for. You know, this thing. So. Why do the rest of the residents of the city have to? Have to face a portion of that?
Yeah, I, I think your question is similar to mine, which maybe Lindsay can explain this, but. I, and maybe I should have done a bunch more research, but what's the origin of this discount? I mean, it's a discount. What's the origin of this? I mean, why do we even do this? Is there an explanation for that?
I mean, in the presentation, it was a discount factor established in nineteen ninety one. And then adopted by Sammamish in nineteen ninety nine. So we're talking about. Twenty and thirty years respectively, without factoring in for. Anything growth or, you know. I don't know.
So I will try to address that, Chairman, and then maybe. If Director Pyle would like to add on or make any corrections to my statement. First, the history is we know that King County. Adopted this back in nineteen ninety one. It was, if I'm not mistaken, the first. Jurisdiction in the state to impose school impact fees. At that time, they worked with the development community and other stakeholders and it was a mutually agreed upon. Proportionate share situation. And it's not been challenged. In the majority. You know, there are a few districts. Here and there, or not districts, but municipalities. That. Have different, that differ from this. I spent a lot of time researching this. You know, it's very difficult to find. Places that differed from this, especially in Washington State. The school district's attorney, Denise De Farm, during a previous presentation in twenty twenty one did. Allude to, and I believe so did. City Council Deputy Mayor Ma Chao. That Duval, for example, is a bit different than the status quo of the fifty percent. However. School impact fees are not just for new builds. And to take on student, new student generation. Based on new houses, housing units, whether that be single family or multifamily added. To the community at large. It's part of, as part of the RCW eighty two oh two oh five oh. Impact fees cannot exceed a proportionate share of the cost of the system improvements. And municipalities must have additional funding sources and may not rely solely on impact fees to fund their improvements. Therefore, impact fees. May not be used to correct existing deficiencies. So a school's age, et cetera, that can't be put fully on new development. To fund the correction of those aging facilities. Hopefully that helps.
Josh?
Yeah, my understanding of the fifty percent discount came nineteen ninety one, a year after the legislative session when. RCW eighty two oh two oh six oh, which allowed or required actually the impact fee collection for schools. And I believe it was just a deal that was struck by the King County Council with stakeholders. That this would be a reasonable way to start the collection of funds. And it seems that it stayed this way because we've always done it this way. So we're going to keep doing it this way. That's what I've been able to find, but there's no like good historical documentation of. You know, the history of it, but that's what I've discovered.
So what percentage of the funds do, for, for a capital. Facilities project that schools have, what portion? Of their funds come from the school impact fees or what are collected by the cities? For the school districts? Do we have that breakdown from the school districts? I know I could find Lake Washington, but I couldn't find Snoqualmie Valley or. Isaguas School District, just with a quick search. For a year. You're on mute, David, but that's fine.
No, I'm unmuted. I'm not familiar with that breakdown and I, I, I haven't come across it in review of. Documents that support impact fees.
Yeah, I think Lake Washington said in twenty sixteen seventeen. They collected one point six million. And then twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, they collected a point four million. So it does, I mean, compared to the entire capital facilities project, it seems like a very small number to me. And, and my other question was, you know, we've been receiving public comment and I'm wondering what's. You know, if this fees, if these fees are going to benefit the school district, why are they? Not jumping up and down for joy? What are their concerns about changing this equation?
So I, I think that. It, it's my perception that the school district's. Position should remain unchanged regardless of what direction it goes. The amount of capital that they receive is unchanged. It, it's a fixed formula regardless of who the contributor is. No?
No, that's, no, that's not, not the case, TC. But they, they would actually, they'll get more if we change it to seventy five percent. By that difference. Because the property taxes stay the same. So this is just a fee and the percentage is not an allocation. It's not an allocation, it's a discount. So if we're giving a fifty percent discount, even though the math is done differently, it's only a discount. So if we set the number, this is, and of course, this is funny math, like Josh said, it's a gentleman's agreement as, as the start. So it's sort of funny math, but what they did is they said, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna say that the community's property taxes fund some portion of that. So we're going to give you a discount and they agreed to fifty percent. So what we're doing is saying that we're going to change that discount. To twenty five percent, which means that you multiply by point seven five of the fee. So then the school districts will get more money. If we change this to seventy five percent, because they're going to get the property tax exactly the same as they were before. And they're going to get instead of fifty percent assessment. They're going to get seventy five percent assessment of the developers' impact fees.
Okay, so I think maybe that was the bridging portion that I needed to get to. For my original question, which is. Who makes up the difference in the discount? Right? And so maybe I didn't articulate it properly in my additional question. It was my, my expectation that if we were giving a fifty percent discount, then the community was obligated to have to make that up.
No, I think it just comes from the overall budget.
Yeah, I, you know, when I read through this, I questioned what the discount was, just like you were doing, TC. And I came to the conclusion that it's just part of the math, just like. They talked about factors that go into calculating the impact fee, the number of costs and growth related facilities and so forth. And then they just throw this number on it, a factor. And it's not like taking away from somebody else or adding, it is just part of the calculation. And that, that clarified for me, just calling it a factor rather than a discount. So, because it's not like money is taken away from somebody else as you take that discount or somebody else has to pay it. Aaron, did I see you had a question?
Yeah, so. So, you know, the, the developer is just going to pass this on to the cost of the home, correct? I mean, they're just not going to pay it. They're going to pass it on as a cost of the home. So homes are going to become more and more expensive. They're going to be more expensive than they would have been at the fifty percent discount, correct? Potentially. Right?
Under, under that math, under that math that you described, yes. However, I want to point out that it does not apply to somebody who is demolishing an existing home and building a new home where there was one. It does not apply to somebody who's doing a home addition. And it does not apply to somebody who's building an accessory dwelling unit as part of their home. So just want to make sure that we're clear on that. It does apply to new homes that are being built. And there is also a deferral option for builders. So you might see that larger builders who are building, say, a thirty lot subdivision. Don't have to pay the fee. The fee, the fee can be paid at the point of home sale for occupancy. So they could defer that down the line and they would add it on to the cost of the home at closing. That is the most common thing we see with these type of impact fees.
Okay, so then the, the individual who's building the house, that would be for one year. And then they would be assessed like everybody else. Correct?
That's, that's correct. So, so what would happen is there'd be a developer who would subdivide a, a big piece of property. And there would be, say, thirty homes built on that property. There might have been one home on the property. So then they're only going to have to pay impact fees on twenty nine lots because you're credited for that one that was there. And then what will happen is they'll, they'll file for a deferral. And they'll indicate that they are going to be paying the impact fees at the point of home sale with, at occupancy of the homes, right? So they'll go down the line, they'll build the homes, the homes will be marketed, the home, and when the homes are sold. Then the impact fee is paid. And at the point of home sale is also the point where real, real property taxes be, start to be assessed on the property. So then they're also starting to pay those, those school. Taxes, if you will, through their property taxes.
Correct, okay.
Can I just offer, I do think, I think it's worth saying that the price of the housing tends to be driven by the market. So, you know, the, the, I do think that people will try to pass this cost through, but the truth is. We've seen that right in the city right now, the cost of housing is spiraled out of control. Not necessarily related to the cost to create it or the fees involved. So whether it'll be strictly an add of ten thousand dollars per house or it gets blended into the sale price. It's not maybe so simple.
Well, the, the other thing is. Okay, so my other question, another train of thought. I thought I read that this was just for new, new, new things. So they can't go back and say, you know, we miscalculated and we have twenty portables in our system. We want to get rid of those portables and build a, a new building. Because I think that's what has happened in the past.
Well, I think part of it is that we've said that we, I believe the, the comment was made that. Aging facilities cannot be corrected using this money. Is that correct? So you can't use it for maintenance, can't use it for repair. You can use it to build a new school. Right? You can use it to acquire land for a new school. But you can't use it to update or upgrade existing facilities. So a school that was built in the nineties that. You know, is probably a pretty good building, but might need some capital improvements, those have to be funded elsewhere. Is that correct?
Sounds, sounds accurate based on my understanding.
Right?
Just one before I check out. It seems like a big jump to go from fifty to seventy five. It, it's just kind of arbitrary. I mean. They just said, Diamond said, well, let's just increase it twenty five percent.
I mean, what is the direction we were given in a motion by city council that passed on a four three vote? To be seventy five percent.
I mean, if the original arbitrary amount was half, we took half of what was left and applied that. I mean, if the original arbitrary amount was half, we took half of what was left and applied that.
Yeah, but the the fifty was um, you know, across King County, it wasn't just the three districts here. So that makes sense to me, but you know, a jump of seventy five, I mean, where's that number come from?
So I I guess I I have a couple more questions, but I don't want to monopolize the time. Are there other folks with questions before I move into my next?
Well, I I don't know if this will take us in a little bit different direction, but I read through um, the letter from the school districts. And frankly, I had a little trouble understanding that. Um, and what I took from that is they're saying, we don't want it to change. And so I don't know, Lindsay, it sounded like you were in the, in the meeting in March or David, maybe you were. Could you help us understand what the school districts are saying?
Uh, I can start. David actually ran that conversation that evening in March, uh, but we have had uh, multiple conversations with the school districts and they have stated that they wish to keep it at the fifty percent. Um, as they stated in the letter, that, you know, they're comfortable with that. Um, it works for them and the way they operate their districts and their budgets currently. Um, and that currently the city's held, let's see if I get this word right, because I don't have the comment up with me. But essentially, if we were to be challenged by a developer, uh, the school districts would fight that challenge on the impact fee. Um, what they, what my takeaway is, one of the statements they made in their comment letter that they submitted for this evening was that if we change it, then potentially they will be um, no longer uh, indemnifying, I believe that's the word, uh, wanting to indemnify the city anymore, and that could be a risk that we take on of having to.
I think it's even, I think it's even more than that. They're requesting that if we make the change, we indemnify them. So it's a, it's a complete reversal.
Right, they're not wanting to take on that additional responsibility if the fee is changed, that that factor is changed.
But I don't, I don't understand that either because I don't know that you would need to indemnify them as a city because it's our code. Uh, we're the ones that are, that are collecting that at that rate. Um, currently, we're collecting it on their behalf, we're setting the rate. Um, so I don't know that there's really any risk for them. I'm not an attorney, but I'm just trying to figure out where the risk is for them.
So my, my, one of my questions was exactly that, as, as the city, city attorney had any opinion or comment about any of this? I mean, I have an opinion that of, of why I think the school district is not interested in this, but I'm curious to hear if anybody else or particularly the city attorney has made any comments.
It would be my expectation that the district's indemnification of the city collection using their formula uh, is there, and if we change the collection method, then there is kind of a, a transfer of liability, I guess, if you will, on what that formula is and. So Josh?
Our formula, not theirs. We adopted in our code, they didn't.
Yeah, but remember, there's two parts, there's their part and then there's our part. Our part is applying a discount, their part is coming up with the number.
I, I believe we adopt the formula and they put the numbers into the formula to come up with the costs of the impact of new development. So we write the formula, they plug in the numbers based on their calculations of.
No, our formula is only the fifty percent. We don't, we don't get into what it costs them to, they give us a, a number and then we plug it in and apply a fifty percent discount. We don't come up with a number, they do.
For, for, for a point of clarification, our, our formula requires uh, various factors that go into generating that number. So what, what happens is the school districts prepare capital facilities plans. And within those capital facilities plans, they provide various factors or numbers um, based on the cost of providing facilities for, for students. Those factors are then ported over into the formula that is within our code. Um, and then that ultimately generates a, a cost at the bottom. And then that, that also includes a discount for the local share. Um, so they provide us with all of the background information to fill in the numbers within the formula, which ultimately generate a cost. And then we also apply our, our, our local share um, discount within, within the formula. Um, so the, what, what's happened, which is interesting for us and, and we would have to do things a little bit differently, is that the, the districts have commonly included within their capital facilities plans the full calculation. So they're not, they're not just providing the, the costs of all the different things that go into providing facilities. They are also embedding within their capital facilities plans, the actual calculation fr- from the formula because all of the jurisdictions, the cities that are within their, their jurisdictional boundaries that collect for them are using the same formula or have been using the same formula, including the same discount fee or, or the same discount rate for local share. So we would become the holdout of that and we would then be calculating it on our own. What we would do is we would simply take the factors that they are providing within their capital facilities plans and adopt those. We would exclude adoption of the, the calculated fee that that's in their plans. And we would then calculate the fee on our own, using our own formula if we were to change the formula. We, there's, that, that is completely viable, we've looked at doing that, um, and that's something we can do.
So, so David, again, other than the nuisance of that, is there any reason that's been expressed why the districts would be opposed to this?
It's, it's been explained to me um, that one of the concerns is, is that um, this is a relatively small portion of their capital facilities budgets. And that what it does is it creates public perception that um, that there's adequate funding already available when the time comes for them to market a bond measure, that the bond measure will be more challenging for them to have passed because the public perception is, is that there already is a higher collection of fees and that the school districts already are getting more money. Um, but the reality is, is that the impact fee collections are very small compared to those revenues that they could gain from a bond measure. So there is fear that this could um, make, get marketing and passing a bond measure more challenging for the districts. Um, that is one of the ways this has been explained to me.
Is there, was there any discussion about?
More questions.
Yeah, I can, can I ask this one TC? Is there, was there any discussion about um, the potential for, so right now, there's kind of a status quo. But if we change the status quo, there could certainly be a challenge to the underlying formula, to all sorts of different things that the school district is doing, how they calculate the numbers in their budget. Right now, nobody pays too much attention to that because there's a status quo. My assumption was that if we change that, then the districts are concerned that, that they may be challenged on how they're coming up with their numbers. You know, what's the basis of their capital plan or something like that? And so they'd incur quite a bit of legal cost in dealing with those kinds of challenges. And that's where I kind of thought maybe that indemnification issue came up and that they're saying, look, the only reason we have to defend ourselves is because the city changed the, the discount rate and now we're being forced to deal with it. And so we want the city to take responsibility for causing that problem. But I don't, I assumed that there was some of that conversation, but it doesn't sound like it.
There, there's also concern, in addition to that, there's also concern about their um, the whole program of impact fees. Um, and the fact that it, it's been working the way it's been set and that a- any change in the landscape of impact fee collection could result in um, a challenge and, and possible state legislation that might change that revenue resource and may, maybe take it away because of uh, the cost of housing. You can see in the, another comment letter that was received from master builders, one of the, the primary points being made in that, in that letter is that this, this possible change might lead to just another increase in the cost of housing. So you could see that being, being something that the district is concerned could backfire on them because it could ultimately lead to the state in its quest to reduce the cost of housing, eliminating this as a possible revenue um, for, for the schools completely. And I, I've heard that as well from the districts.
Yeah, so that, uh, the districts in my mind, hearing all this, it's the unintended consequences that, you know, who knows what might actually happen, but right now it's, it works for them. Um, so I have a, another quick question. So what's the motivation from city council for, for making this change? If the school districts aren't clamoring for it, then um, you know, it's been okay the way it is. So why was the direction given to change the discount factor?
Is my understanding that it is, it is, it stems from concern, public concern, publicly stated concern regarding the adequacy of our school facilities within the city and the, the ability of those school facilities to keep pace with the rate of growth. And that the, the amount of time it takes for the district to pull together a bond measure, market a bond measure and get a bond measure passed based on when, when election cycles occur, um, that they are unable to keep up with that rate of demand for school growth and facility growth. And that we do need to be able to provide revenues, even if it's at a smaller rate to the school districts so that they can start to build or make interim changes to their facilities that are necessary for them to keep up with the demand for uh, classroom space. Uh, we are seeing uh, our schools overcrowded in many ways where they're taking multipurpose space and turning it into classroom space where it really shouldn't be classroom space. The, the um, the numbers of students that are in classrooms have gone up, um, where they weren't designed for that. They're using portables where there are not restrooms or water available. Um, and the students have to walk great distances to get to restrooms or water. Um, these are all things that are of concern. It's the quality of the education environment that we have. Um, and just wanting to make sure that, that in order for us to be competitive as a, a really great place to live and as a community, that we have uh, competitive uh, school resources and school, school facilities um, that, that match the expectation of the community and those people that are moving to the community. That, that is the primary understanding as I, I've heard it.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
There is no guarantee, sorry, but there is no guarantee that the funds collected will be applied to the schools in Sumamish, as you stated earlier, David.
That is, that is one of the facts, it's a challenge. Um, and the, the school, city council has recognized that, but their recognition has been that, that yes, we, we understand that, however, um, you know, it, it will help across the board with the district so that when, so that resources aren't taken away from our schools in order to help other schools that might be struggling. It's that across the board, the school districts need additional funding, um, not just in Sumamish. And, you know, two million more dollars towards the Lake Washington district is two million more dollars towards the Lake Washington district. And that's a positive thing from the perspective of the city council. At, at least from those members of the city council that, that voted in favor of that. I'm not speaking for them, you can watch the tape yourself and see how the conversation went.
As, as part of this conversation, Lindsay, are you able to pull back up the draft code amendment so that we can understand parts of it? And, and I guess, before I go too far down this, is there room to look at other portions of the code in addition to simply the changes that have already been made? Or has, has that, has that ship sailed?
Our direction was specific to this discount factor. Um, David, do you have any thoughts on that beyond?
Yeah, I'm, 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 I guess I'm curious what other sections you would want to change. Our direction was very specific, uh, surgical amendment to the discount factor regarding local share. Um, that's what we were tasked with doing and that's what we have presented here for your consideration.
Yeah, so I guess the first portion is twenty one A one oh five dot eighty?
All right, give me just a moment here, it doesn't appear to be loading.
It's okay, take your time.
I'm gonna stop sharing for a moment and see if it's, let me reopen this file and see if that solves the issue one moment, please.
Love, love PDFs, sometimes they work, sometimes they don't.
While Lindsay is pulling that up, David, a question for you. So if, if the city were to go to the seventy five percent, um, you know, factor for school impact fee, when, when would that start? Uh, so for uh, projects that are in the pipeline right now or only for new applications? Do we know when that happens?
So the way, the way this, this calendar is set up is it would take effect at the end of the year. Uh, because we would first have to go through the legislative cycle of actually making the code change. The city council would then have to adopt that code change. And we have timed that um, within, within one meeting of their adoption of the capital facilities plans for twenty twenty one. So we would, we would first um, we'd first amend the code and then a week later, we would consider adoption of the capital facilities plans. And that same night, if the capital facilities plans are adopted, we would then adopt a revision to the city's uh, fee schedule, adopting a new impact fee for schools based on this changed formula. So it would then go into effect at that time. Impact fees have to be adopted by ordinance. So we would, e- even though the formula might be changed here, we would also then have to have a partner uh, ordinance that would change the impact fee in order to make it effective.
So uh, for, for, for a development or developer or even individual homeowner who's deferred their uh, payment of the school impact fees to either the sale or the move in date, uh, does that get affected by, by this adoption of the ordinance?
Yes, you do not vest to impact fees. So un- unless you pay the impact fees upfront, you then would be subject to any changes in those impact fees that might occur over time up to the point where you pay the impact fee.
That's very good to know, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, is this the section you were asking for?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So uh, I guess one of the things that I wanted to note and I'll have to go back. I, I was looking mostly at kind of the letter that came from the Master Builders Association and first of all, I, I want to, if they're listening, I want to thank them for, you know, their time and thoughtful input. Uh, I, I appreciate everything that they had to say. But it, it brought me to a question about, you know, how, how your fees impact homeownership and, and things of that nature and kind of our statewide desire to get towards more affordable housing. At what point does this exemption for low to moderate income housing uh, coincide to the stated desire to have more affordable housing? At, at what point does low to moderate and affordable become the same thing?
So, so I think it's by definition. So i- i- if you meet the definition of low or moderate income housing, um, developed by public housing agencies or private nonprofit housing developers, which is key right there. Um, tho- those, those additional factors, it has to be a public housing agency or a private nonprofit housing developer. So if you are a for-profit housing developer that is building a three hundred unit um, apartment building or condominium building, um, and you're happening, happening, you, you happen to be selling twenty percent of those units as low or moderate income housing, you're not el- you're not eligible under item one because you're not a nonprofit or a public housing agency, right? Um, so then you would go to number two and you'd have to then apply for um, a reduction pursuant to criteria for housing agencies and private nonprofit in subsection one. So you then would, would have to request that. Department shall review proposed developments, criteria, determine whether qualified for the exemption. We shall reduce for the development amount that is a pro- proportion to the number of units. So what we can do, so, so you, you are eligible by definition under item one if you are a low to moderate income housing or you are a um, public housing or a, and you are a public housing agency or private nonprofit housing developer, private nonprofit housing developer. But if you are a for-profit housing developer and you are building low or moderate income housing, you can request to have the fee reduced um, for the number of units that are uh, low or moderate income housing units. Um, but this is a policy tool that could be applied in order to promote the development of low to moderate income housing in the city, right? the development of low to moderate income housing in the city, right? Um, and that's what, that's why this is here, is it's meant to try to incentivize development and not add extra costs onto development for low to moderate income housing. So what would you, what would you change here?
So, so this was more of a point of clarification. I just wanted to make sure that I, I was understanding this correctly and that a developer couldn't simply say, oh, well, instead of doing three hundred units of regular housing, we're gonna do four hundred and fifty units. And we're gonna, you know, going back to some of the other conversations that we've had about, uh, getting credits for units based on assigning them as, you know, low-income housing units, right? So that they can get a credit to go off and build like more total units. And if you remember, like a couple of meetings ago, we were, working on the, on the code around that. Right, you gave the example of making like each lot size a little bit smaller to pack more units into a potential project. That makes sense well added with this?
Plan unit development code, yeah.
Yes, yeah. Okay, I, I, I think my question here is answered and I, and I appreciate that. My next question is in the next section down, uh, dot nine zero. And looking at section six, which makes reference to refunds after a specific amount of time? And I think it was also within section eight where they mentioned that, developer can request a refund including interest earned on impact fees. And I guess I wanted to try and understand what portion of collected or encumbered fees is returned on an annual basis? And whether or not we know that? Is it, as I, as I read through it, it seemed that if you didn't expend the collected fees within a certain amount of time, the builder was able to apply for a refund or a rebate of those fees with interest accrued?
That's, that's correct. So state law has parameters around how and when impact fees must be spent. And if the, the agency that collects and the agency that budgets for the, the expenditure of the impact fees is not able to deliver the projects that it had intended and those impact fees end up, um, accumulating in an account, um, the, the, that agency cannot simply just let them continue to, uh, accumulate and accrue interest. The, that, that agency must refund those back to the original payee or their assignment, their assigned down the line, right? So if the developer has left the scene and has sold the units to the individual homeowners, then the homeowners would be eligible to receive refund, uh, from that, that, that return on, uh, the impact fee, right? So it, it, it doesn't just pertain to, there are other relevant sections that pertain to transportation impact fees and parks impact fees just the same, that you actually have to have a plan to spend the money. You can't just collect the money for the sake of spending the money. Because the fee is actually based on a capital facilities plan that you, you should reasonably expect to be delivered within a reasonable timeframe. So if that capital facilities plan is not delivered and the agency is simply accumulating the, the funds, then the agency is obligated under state law to return those funds with interest.
Yeah, so I guess my, my point of bringing this up is as we look at the quality of education that we are, you know, receiving from the various districts that provide, you know, education within our city, why wouldn't any of these districts be spending a hundred percent of their collected fees? A- at no point have I seen any, you know, definitive or empirical evidence that says, well, you know, we actually have fewer students per classroom. Like, we don't need as much money. We don't need to build as many schools. We don't need to hire as many teachers, right? And, and I guess, let me, let me back that out. Hire as many teachers is not part of this, right? We don't need to build as many schools. We don't need to facilitate as many upgrades. We don't need to do any of the things that these fees could pay for, right? It's, it's a one-way street. We're going down the, the route of needing more, we're not needing less.
There, 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 there may be unknown circumstances that the district would encounter. For example, with COVID, we've seen major project delays because of the supply chain. So, you know, maybe they're unable to deliver a project in a certain amount of time. It doesn't mean the project is not needed, they're unable to deliver it. I, I don't know how that would work with, with refunds. Um, it, you, you may find that there's, it may perhaps a, a grant or a gift from a nonprofit or a, a special donor that, that then re- reduces the need for, uh, the district to, to, to build a new facility. You know, a school was gifted by the Gates Foundation or something, right? I'm just coming, coming up with, with possible, um, scenarios that, that could be unforeseen, that could occur. And then the developer might have a, a reason to argue that their, their impact fee is no longer needed and should be refunded.
Do you have to do that, David? Anytime in the city?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Uh, when you were in Bellevue, do you remember if you guys had to do that there?
They, they did have to refund, uh, transportation impact fees in Bellevue because they were unable to deliver the projects in a certain amount of timeframe.
If memory serves, in the city of Sammamish, didn't we have to do a refund of transportation fees associated with the Sahaly Way project not going through?
I, I, I'm not in the transportation department or public works department, so I, I apologize. But I, I don't know, I haven't, I actually have not heard of that, so.
It was a, a big topic of conversation that developers paid, you know, a certain amount of money into, you know, these various things. And, you know, it was a use it or lose it. You have X number of years, otherwise you have to give it back.
It's possible.
Okay.
And I'm assuming this, uh, we, or the school districts have ten years to spend this, the, the fees collected through the school impact fees. So this limitation would span around ten years on the refund would happen after that, correct?
That's my understanding, this, this would follow state law.
Okay, thanks.
I believe it's six years. If you go up to section five, the current property owner may receive a refund if fees have not been expended or encumbered within six years of the receipt of the funds by the city.
And, yeah, I, I, I'm, I need to go back to the RCW to see if the RCW has changed. And it might be inconsistent with the RCW, but I, we'd have to take a look at that.
What else do you have, DC?
Uh, I, I, I think I've run my course.
Anybody else have questions for Lindsay or David?
I just have one, um, question. Has anybody projected out how much money this is going to? Of course, we don't know the future, how many houses are going to be built or whatever. But is there an estimate on how much we're talking about here? No? Okay.
No, we, we haven't estimated that. You, you, you could, uh, you know, say, think, think about the, the average rate. So if we were to average out what the, the single-family rate is that's currently there and we were to, to take, take, for example, uh, two hundred units built in a year, which would be reasonable for Sammamish. And if you were to do the math, I don't know, Lindsay, if you can quickly average out, what the impact fee is for single-family residences across the jurisdictions, the three of them. And if we could do that for the fifty percent discount and the, um, the seventy-five percent discount, then we would understand what the difference is between those applied to two hundred units in one year. We'd know what the difference in revenue would be on average.
And the reason I'm asking is because city council, their reasoning for wanting to change it and up the fee is so that the schools would have more money. I, I was just curious how much money we're talking about. Is it enough to, you know, be so concerned?
Yeah, I, I did a quick, David, using your two hundred units and the additional fee created, uh, from the high and low for the impact fees in the three different districts, about seventy-five hundred dollars additional. That's like one point five million. It's not a lot of money in the grand scheme of things. But it helps.
Yeah, I came up with the exact same number, Mike. And I think it's important to, to point out that that would be spread out amongst whoever the houses get built. So it could be all in Issaquah or it could get spread between Lake Washington and Issaquah. It's not each, it's not, you know, it, it could go to any of those or it could be spread between all of them.
Right.
Yeah, but it's an order of magnitude that gets us in the ballpark.
Yeah.
I came out to sixty-five hundred as the rough estimate for single-family average to view average all three districts together at the fifty percent rate.
And, and David, the two hundred estimate is, uh, considering the moratorium that we have since almost the beginning of twenty seventeen?
So we, we are not currently in a moratorium, correct? Um, it's, the moratorium has been lifted. And the Sammamish Plateau Water and Sewer District also had a sewer moratorium which has expired. So there is currently no moratorium within the city of Sammamish, uh, whether, not, not a city moratorium nor a water and sewer district moratorium.
Thanks for clarifying.
Can I figure out what the maximum would be if we looked at the total number of available plots or parcels, right?
We could also look at the, the growth target that was, uh, assigned to the city as part of the King County, our, um, countywide planning policies efforts that is currently under consideration by the King County Council for adoption, uh, which would then be used as part of our, uh, metrics and baseline for our twenty twenty-four, uh, city comprehensive plan effort.
Can I, can I ask a one clarifying question that I maybe? This all, this discussion is all about new development. What, what happens if, and I know some of this is theory, but in theory, we get to the point where the city is built out and there's no more, um, subdivisions, no more large plat-, you know, tech developments and then, and it's only an infill house here and there. Wha- what happens with this at that point? Is it, it's still, anybody that's building a, that's subdividing a property, would they pay on the three replacements versus the one? Or just the net difference? Or if somebody's replacing one thing, they don't pay? Or if they buy a piece of property and can, I, I guess, instead of just large developments, how will this apply when it's really none of the large developments anymore?
It, it, it's a one new unit. If, if you have a vacant lot and you want to build a new home on that, you would pay for one new unit. If you bought a vacant lot and you were able to subdivide that vacant lot into two lots and you were to build two homes, then you would pay for two new units. One of the comment letters was from Mary Victor that did include a, another suggestion for code change that was related to condominiums. And she was asking that we add a clarification regarding condominiums being consistent with multifamily. Um, I want to point out that a condominium is actually not a land use archetype. It's not, it's not a duplex, it's not a single-family unit, it's not an apartment. It's not a multifamily development. A condominium is just a type of ownership. So we, we see condominiums in all shapes and sizes. We can see a condominium that is, uh, you know, three or four single-family homes on one, on one lot. We could see a condominium that's a commercial property. We could see a condominium that is duplex. We could see a condominium that is a multifamily apartment-style building where each one of them are considered as condominiums. So just wanted to clarify how the term condominium is used, um, in, in, in state law and also in our, our land use rules.
So David, I, that leads me to kind of another dovetail question, which is when, when we extrapolate out, how these fees are paid, there's a note, it's in twenty-one A105060. Is the, is the fee paid per plot or per unit developed? So a- as you, as you mentioned, right? If, if you had, uh, a, a single plot, somebody builds one net new house, they pay for one. If there's one house, they subdivide, they build three, they pay for two because that's the net difference, right? If there is, uh, an empty or vacant lot and they build a hundred apartments, they pay once because it's one plot?
They would pay, if they're apartments that are privately owned or that are owned by one owner, right? They're not condominiumized and sold as condos. Then you'd be, you'd be paying, right? You, you, you could defer to the point of occupancy. You'd have to pay your impact fees before we would grant occupancy of the building, right? You, you could defer, there are different points in the process that you could defer to. You could pay at the point of building permit issuance. You could pay, you know, you, you could pay at the point of land use entitlement permit, right? You could pay at the point of, uh, building permit issuance. You could pay at the point of occupancy.
But are they paying per unit?
Per unit, yes.
Okay, so for, so for multifamily stuff like apartment complex, they're paying per unit? They're not?
Per unit.
Correct. If it's a two-hundred-unit apartment and there was one house on the property and it was zoned so that apartments could go in, so they demolished the house and now it's two-hundred-unit apartments, they're basically paying for a hundred and ninety-nine units at the multifamily rate for the apartments because they got one credit for the existing house that they demolished. But it's a one-time fee.
And that's the end of all of my questions. For now.
One last call for anybody else before we have open the public hearing? No, okay. Thank you, Lindsay. And you too, David. Okay. Let's officially open the public hearing. Amber, do we need to read the statement again or can we just proceed to the public hearing?
I'm not going to read the full statement. I do just want to remind everyone how they can join, um, if they want to make comment, rather. One moment. To provide public comment, you can join via the Zoom link. Once you have joined, dialed into the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to indicate that you would like to provide a public comment. Your mic will be muted until you are called upon to give public comment. Also, you can dial in the phone number, um, listed on the city site as well. And to raise your hand, you can push star nine to indicate that you would like to give public comment. And I do have some callers on the line, one moment. Okay, Mr. Paul Stickney, you are unmuted and able to give comment.
There we go, I have to get used to this. Hello, Planning Commissioners, Paul Stickney here. I watched the meeting in February where initially staff and the school districts were in agreement at that time about, um, not raising the impact fee and provided a copy of that letter the school district put on the record in February that I heard what they talked about in March. And I agree that relatively speaking, the contribution of these funds is fairly de minimis. But an interesting point, I think, to add is that, and I've heard about these things anecdotally in several conversations I've had over the last couple of months. So these are not checked, I haven't called, verified and confirmed, it's just what I've heard. I've heard that the Issaquah School District has had a reduction in enrollment of somewhere in the neighborhood of five to seven percent uh, in, in the last couple of years. I hear that the Lake Washington enrollment is down two or three percent. Again, I don't know if these are accurate. The question I have is in regard- The question I have is in regards to not necessarily only COVID, but what we've been going through with some potential learning from home. What will school district demand be like? Is that a consideration in deciding whether these fees go up or not relative to the school district's ability to provide a better environment if there's less in-school demand? And again, I don't know that'll happen. So it's just it has happened, but I don't know if it will continue to happen. Then relatively speaking, hearing the conversations um this evening. Uh, I was prepared in my mind on the things I've shared already. The next couple of things are based on things that I've heard heard this evening. Um, I don't have the precise numbers. Again, this will be somewhat in range. But I think there's approximately four hundred units in town center that are not approved yet. They've gone back for remand for further discussion. Whether they do ultimately get approved or not is unknown at the end of the day. And I believe that roughly speaking, there is about two to two hundred and fifty houses in the pipeline now with a majority of them, I would guess a good eighty percent. Again, anecdotal numbers are subdivisions that started back in uh, two thousand fifteen, sixteen and seventeen. It's my understanding that the number of lots that have been applied for that are i- in the pipeline today uh, are less than fifty from two thousand eighteen until now. So that gives you some rough scale. And then a question that is interesting because I was not aware that school district fees do not vest in amount. So if there's a change and they were deferred, people would have to pay the higher fee. A question for consideration, if somebody learned about that, could they uh, march in and pay the fee now before the new rule goes into effect? So those are just my uh, contributions from the conversations I heard tonight and give a little bit more food for thought. Uh, in reading the school district letters and weighing it all, in my mind, my simple statement in the public comment I provided was just let it ride at at the fifty percent. That's all I have. Have a good evening and thanks for all your good questions and thoughtful discussion tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney. And I'm just going to check with our second caller to see if they have a comment to make. Caller, would you like to make any comment? Yes.
Hi, it's Mary Victor. Uh, since Director of Planning, David Pyle, Director of Community Development, David Pyle, um, said that uh, condos are not an architectural thing or a land use type. They're a way of ownership because you independently own, whether it's single or however it's built. Um, there don't need to be changes on that. It was very minor anyway. And then the other piece I mailed in and just said accessory dwelling units can be ex- exempted, um, but only if they're contained within or attached to a home. A detached one would not be. And I know the city's been trying to um, encourage uh, ADUs or DDUs, which would be an attached one. So it might help with housing affordability. So I had emailed in that and pretty much you don't need to do it. And just on fees for the amount of money you're making and the amount of hardship, it changes to have one city be different than the others. It just doesn't seem worth it. If you want that to happen, you should advocate for all the school districts and all the cities to do the same thing. Um, otherwise I think keeping what they have sort of makes sense and it's been a long time.
Thank you, Mary. And I'm just going to check with our last caller. Caller, would you like to give a comment? Okay, it doesn't look like they want to, so I will give that back to you, Chair Baughman.
Thank you, Amber. So I will close the public hearing. Thanks for those who made comments. All right, um. First off, was there any questions, not discussion, but questions generated from any of those comments?
I don't know. This is an appropriate question. Uh, would there be an opportunity to hear from the school district officials for the purpose of this discussion or on this topic?
I assume unless they've called in that we won't hear from them other than the the what they submitted.
I would expect that anything they have to say, they would say to the city council.
Is that right, David?
That's correct. We be because this is our code and this is a city code change uh, that affects, you know, developers and school districts alike. Um, it is, we had it set up the evening tonight to have a a roundtable conversation with the school district.
Okay, any other questions? So what we should do at this point is if someone could, um, if you want to use the motion that was in the packet, um, that would be good. Let's make a motion in a second and um, making motion, just as a reminder, making motion doesn't necessarily mean that you're supporting it, but it allows us as part of our um rules of order to proceed with the discussion. So if someone could make that motion.
I move to recommend the city council uh, the proposed amendments in chapter twenty-one A oh one five SMC school impact fees as presented by staff and as described in exhibit one. Move to recommend the city adopt the proposed amendments.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to uh, make this recommendation to the city council. So now discussion, um, comments, discussion items. Who would like to go first? The volunteers?
Uh, I can speak to it.
Go ahead, Josh.
Uh, I support increasing the fee because uh, I think it's important that new development actually pay for the impact that it causes. Um, the formula says that each new single or multifamily family dwelling unit has a certain uh, monetary impact. Uh, I've not been able to find a real explanation for why we provide a discount to fifty percent, other than it's the way we've been doing it. And in my view, doing it the same way because we've done it that way before is a terrible reason to continue. Uh, I'm not persuaded at all that collecting a little bit more money in impact fees is going to make it harder for the districts to pass bonds. As somebody who works in that field a lot, it doesn't persuade me in the slightest. Um, if the discount is being used to fix an inaccurate or bad formula, then the formula itself should be fixed. The best way to fix a bad law is by strict uh, adherence to it. And if there's something wrong with the the law or the formula, then that should be fixed. We shouldn't be using these formulas to do that. So that's why I'm supportive of adjusting the formula or the discount.
I'd like to echo what what Josh said about developers kind of paying their share of the impact that's caused by by the development.
Yeah, I'll add, um. I was concerned about what the school district said because of course the money goes to them and you think they would have a vested interest in saying, you know, bring it on more and more. So I considered the unintended consequences that we've talked about that I couldn't really discern clearly in the letter. Um, and I can't, I can't say that those are compelling enough to say that uh, increasing the percentage or actually, you know, moving from the point seven, point five to point seven five would not be a good thing. It it does provide some additional money for development. We know that schools are really straining. Um, on the surface of it, that seems like the better way to go in the interest of the community. So I'm I'm for the motion.
Karen and Ratuja?
I think all my primary concerns are, you know, uh, I think what the school district has said, uh, you know, I I'm really maybe we need, I need to read more into the letter and really understand why they would not uh, you know, be accepting of additional revenue. Uh, my concern as stated uh, earlier by Commissioner Malcolm is also, you know, are these uh, fees or the school impact fees, will they be really passed on to the homeowners? Uh, you know, if that has been the trend that developers, you know, wait till the end or they defer their fees to ownership. Is that cost really being passed on to the homeowners and and especially as we have single homes, you know, where individuals uh, who live in Sammish who want to grow a family here, if they're the ones who are building and are they bearing this additional cost? Um, I do understand, however, you know, and and you know, with with such a small sort of uh, development pipeline that we have right now, it's it's not a lot. Uh, I do understand that, you know, even collecting a little more money can add up and in ten years, you know, you can have a sort of compounded um, uh, collection so that that might benefit the schools. I think my other concern is really that these funds collected, you know, the city of Sammish will bear or the residents of Sammish will bear this additional burden of uh, you know, collecting school impact fees, but will that really be going to the schools in Sammish? You know, our schools here are relatively new. Uh, and I'm I'm not convinced that all that, uh, all the funds that will be raised will really go into the uh, schools in Sammish and our uh, families will benefit from that. Um, and I I think I probably do need a little bit more information on the legal liability that the city will face. Uh, and you know, how much sort of we will end up uh, spending or, you know, uh, be spending in in those potential losses. What's our liability? So those are some of the concerns that I have um, with us sort of, you know, changing the status quo and considering that school districts have been, you know, using this formula across multiple cities and it's working for them. Um, uh, I would potentially like to just keep it at status quo.
I'd like to keep it at status quo as well. I I just don't see a compelling reason to to raise it. I just it seems to me or appears as though city council said we need more money for schools. Let's do it this way. You know, and I, as uh, as been stated, you know, if it doesn't stay in Sammish, I just think it's, I just don't like it.
I'll add just a a couple of comments for thought here. Um. I think that there's definitely some to some degree, the school districts have built their budget process around knowing what the formula and the discount was going to be. And so it makes some sense to me that they, we may collect additional money, but they may just change their process in how they, because they've anticipated the exact same thing every year. So instead of asking for um, they need a hundred dollars, so they don't ask for a hundred dollars. They ask for two hundred dollars. So that by the time the discount comes through, they get a hundred dollars. I know it's more complex than that, but people adapt to the system. So I think if we change it to seventy-five percent instead of asking for you know, two hundred dollars, they'll ask for whatever that is, a hundred and fifty dollars to still get to their same end goal. I maybe not, but I I can see why maybe there the to them, they may end up having to adjust their process anyway to account for whatever we do. Um, that may not be the best thing, but that's probably practical how it works. And so um, the question to me becomes, uh, are there unintended consequences that could occur? And uh, I think that they're hesitant about that and I I agree that that could happen. However, maybe that's the right thing. Maybe this thirty almost year old system needs to be challenged a little bit. Um, and yeah, it could be that the state would take it away, but I'm not really sure that that seems likely in the state of Washington. So um, I I think all of that is probably some healthy change that that could happen. Um, I also think that my suspicion would be that the council, city council, and I haven't talked to any of them about it, obviously, but you know, um, yeah, we could, we could be the oddball, but it may initiate others to reconsider. I mean, somebody's got to go first. So do we want to be the ones that go first and and say, well, you know, let's challenge this. Let's try to collect a bit more um, for as a development fee because we've seen the cost of housing. Um, the cost of building gets gone up, but the cost to that can be collected and in selling those that housing stock has spiraled very high. And so is that really that much of an impact to anybody? Um, I'm not sure that it is. It's I'm hard to, it's hard for me to be convinced that it is. So maybe we just need to go first and try it and uh, and see what happens. And I suspect that if we do and are reasonably successful, that other communities in the same situation will probably follow suit. And then that could generate some difficulties for everyone involved. So uh, it's a tough one just because I think that the people who are impacted a lot, the school districts um, have spoken pretty clearly that they're opposed to it. But I also practically think that whatever we say, the city council is going to pursue this. Um, so what we're doing is really providing input and advice and things that the city council can debate and discuss and that they're going to pursue this, um, however they see fit. So uh, I think it's important for us to send the message of what we've discussed and what we think is appropriate. And then I think that they'll they'll do what they think is is the most appropriate thing, almost irrespective of that. So those are my couple of comments. Anybody else want to add on? Yikes, we might actually make it by eight thirty. Okay, uh, if nobody else has any comments, then I will call for a vote. So if you could um unmute and raise your hand just to make sure that in the Zoom meeting and the recording, it's crystal clear. So it's been moved and seconded to recommend to the city council the proposed amendments to chapter twenty-one A dot one oh five SMC school impact fees as presented by staff and as described in exhibit one. Alls all those in favor of making this recommendation to the city council, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right. All those opposed similarly say no?
No.
Okay, so that is four to two. That recommendation will go to the city council. Uh, I would say that's a not a real simple crystal clear one. So thank you for the conversation, the comments and the questions. I think that's very useful information and I hope the council actually listens uh, to this session and gets a little bit of feedback from it.
And just real quick, I want to thank both David and Lindsay for your time and your patience and uh, the rest of the chair people for uh, sticking with me as I asked an extraordinary amount of questions. So thank you all.
I wouldn't call it extraordinary. I'd call it extraordinary.
Well, okay, so so the next one, I'll ask even more questions. Let's book three hours for this meeting.
All right, can I just do a quick check with the folks from staff here if there's any other business, if we need to look at the calendar or anything?
Um, I I can't recall. I have to, do you do you know, Lindsay, do we include a uh agenda planner here? I apologize. I have really bad allergies tonight. They're really hurting me right now. So I'm having a hard time functioning.
We're off on the sixteenth and then we're back the first week of October.
That is, yep, that is correct. You um, have the second meeting in September off and then our our next meeting is back in October and it's a joint meeting with the city council and it's a packed agenda. So grab an energy drink.
And it's a study session, Rick, Kelly?
It is a study session.
Okay.
Do we have any guidance on uh, being back in person? Are we going to continue remote through the rest of the year? Do we have anything there?
Um, I'm sorry, you go ahead.
It's a, it's a wait and see. Um, we're we're seeing some pretty big changes again in public health guidance and uh, we're we're not wanting to, you know, and we're not wanting to, you know, shift gears to come back in person, only that, to go remote again. So we're trying to see what happens as we go back to school here in Washington. There's likely to be some big spikes in some public health concerns. So try to see what happens here.
This works well and, you know, David, I'm sure you much prefer to be at home right now instead of in City Hall. Hey, I have a question. We tabled the plan unit development in the discussions last time we met. When will we get back to that? Is that going to be in the next phase or what?
I'm muted. We will need to get feedback from the city council as to what that, where that stands on our work program. We do have a very full work program, limited resources to get things done. So it will be a spin off that will likely, as I see it, take, it'll either be part of Phase Three or it will be its own project that could take shape sometime in 2022. However, we do have a long list of legislative items to get through next year as well. So we really need feedback from the council as to their priority there. And if they wanted to see us continue with that, we will likely have to bump other work that they also see as important off of our work plan.
That's good. Thanks, David.
We will be coming back to the commission on October 16th. Is that what it is, Kelly? With an update on where we stand with the development regs Phase Two. And that is on the agenda for that evening. Can you confirm that? Do you have that?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think that's it. Could someone move to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second.
Second, great. Moving to second to adjourn, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
David, go take a Claritin. Thanks, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
You too. Thanks.
Welcome back. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.